Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our June 13th council meeting. We bring it to order. Please rise for a pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none to the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Presentations, potentially dangerous dog hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have requested action by council to determine by hearing if a potentially dangerous dog determination issued by the city administrator to Odavious Gomez Gonzalez should be sustained, modified, or removed. The request for the hearing relates to a bite injury incident that occurred on April 27th, 2022. The Inoka County Sheriff's Office reported that a German Shepherd dog owned by Mr. Gonzalez was involved in a bite incident with Robert Bly at 21611 Tyler Street Northeast. This is the second bite incident for this dog. The first occurred in 2020, but the bite victim did not wish to pursue the case. Since the current matter was apparently unprovoked and not under control by the owner, a potentially dangerous dog notice was issued by the Inoka County Deputy investigating this incident. Mr. Gonzalez's dog was not licensed at the time of the bite. Mr. Gonzalez has not applied for or received a city license as of June 9th, 2022, nor as of today's date. A potentially dangerous dog means any dog that, when unprovoked, inflicts bites on a human or domestic animal on public or private property. Pursuant to City Code, Chapter 10, Article 2 Dogs, Section 1072, an animal owner is allowed to contest a potentially dangerous dog determination. As of this date, Mr. Gonzalez, the animal's owner, had not responded to the hearing notice. I did contact Mr. Gonzalez this morning, and he indicated that he would be here tonight. At this time, city staff recommends that city council conduct a hearing relating to the potentially dangerous dog determination and issue a decision regarding this incident pursuant to City Code, Chapter 10, Animals, Article 2 Dogs, Division 3, and impose any requirements for the keeping of the dog.
Okay, we'll open the dangerous dog hearing for the bite incident at 21611 Tyler Street Northeast. If there's anyone here tonight who wishes to speak to council on this matter, now is your time. If you can come to the podium. If you could state your name and address, please.
Yep, my name is Robert Bly, and I'm at 20067 Naples Street Northeast, East Bethel, Minnesota, 55011. So yeah, on that date, I've worked for Domino's now for, I've worked part-time there since 2019. I've made about 4,500 deliveries since then, so I've made a lot of deliveries, just for background. On that day, and just like any other day, I have a smaller car. It's a Honda Civic four-door. I usually keep the pizzas in back of the car, in the backseat, behind the driver's side. I pulled up to the driveway. The driveway is, and the garage of this house is on the left. The house is on the right. It's an attached garage. But I got out. I didn't see any dog at that time, but I just got out like any other delivery, opened up my back door, got the order, walked up to the house, knocked on the door. An elderly answered the door, and I just gave her her food like normal. And then proceeded down the stairs, walked back in front of my car, and it kind of gets a little fuzzy right here, but I think I was almost, I was between my passenger, our driver's side door and the passenger door. Like I said, I keep my stuff in the back seat, so I usually put the, I have the pizza delivery bag. I was somewhere along there when I heard a dog growl, bark, snarl. Just being around dogs my whole life, I knew, in my head, it's told me this isn't going to be good. And at some point, I got my rear car door open, and I turned to face the dog, and I had my delivery bag, because I was going to try to shield myself from the dog. Soon as it came up to me, it was snapping at me, and I think I tried to push it away with the bag, and it bit me in my hand right here. At that point in time, I pushed it back a little bit after it bit me. I just decided I needed to get out of there, so I just fell back in my backseat. It kind of came in again. I kicked at it with my foot, and I don't know if I hit it or not. But then I was kind of waiting there for a second for it to like come in or whatever, but it never did, so I closed the door, and it just sat out there barking pretty much nonstop. I reached over the front seat to honk the horn, which I did about seven or eight times, hoping that someone would come out to get the dog, so I could, you know, get out and get in my car to drive away. Nobody did, so I climbed over the front seat. I wasn't sure what I should do at that time, because I've never had that happen to me before, so I wasn't sure if I should stay there, call the cops, or drive back to the store and call the cops, or, I mean, obviously, I didn't want to get back out or whatever, so I just called my wife for advice while I was in the driveway. The dog was still out there barking aggressively. My wife, when I got her on the phone, she thought I was still outside. The dog was barking so loud and was so aggressive. So at that point, she said, you just need to leave and go back to the store and whatnot. But that's pretty much my story on events that happened. But like I said, when I first pulled up, I didn't know that there was a dog even out or whatnot, so.
Did you seek medical attention?
No.
Okay. The council has been provided with photos of your bite on your hand.
Yep.
Any questions from this block tonight? Okay, you're pretty descriptive.
Okay. Is that it?
Great. Yep, thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight on this matter? If you could state your name and address, please.
Odavious Gomez Gonzalez. Address is 21611 Tyler Street Northeast, East Bethel, Minnesota.
Okay.
The date of the incident, my wife had collapsed on the floor. I took her to, so her lower back was, she couldn't get up. She called me at noon, or it was 1:00. She said, I need to come home. I'm on the ground. She was cleaning, I guess, and I was in St. Cloud working. So from St. Cloud, I came home, gave her some, I, that was around 2, around 3:00 when I got home, gave her some Tylenol, hopefully, hoping the pain will go away. And then waited an hour. It didn't go away. Then I called 911. Ambulance came. They took her. My wife's sister came home from work, and then that's when we left. The kids with her. She don't live with us, but she lives in St. Paul. She came and picked up her younger daughter that my wife takes care of sometimes. So my oldest is 10, which I would never let the dog out ever since the first incident. Like, I had to be out there when the dog is out. I don't know why he let him out that day. And I, I told him that there was pizza coming, because it was getting late. And it was 5:00 when ambulance came, took my wife to, here in Cambridge, to the emergency room. Then I followed the ambulance there to see what, just to go with her. So my oldest let the dog out, and I don't know why. And I don't know why they didn't hear when the dog was barking, I guess. I asked my sister, and I said, didn't you hear the dog barking? She said, no, because the kids were noisy. I have three kids, and then plus hers. But, I guess, I don't, I don't know what else. Do you want, what do you want me to do with the dog? I can, I tried to contact adoptions, and after I told them, he's bitten twice, they don't want to take him. Or I brought him to training. But he's, he's good outside the property. Just when there's strangers in the property, that's when he acts protective.
Is your, is your property fenced right now?
No, it's not fenced. It's got an invisible fence. He's got a collar on him all the time.
Okay.
So he doesn't leave the yard. When I, when we leave the yard with them, he's a good dog. He's, the neighbors, all the, all my neighbors, they like him. And he's good. Outside the yard, he's really good with everybody.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Gomez.
Do your kids love your, love the dog? I mean, are they really attached to the dog?
Yeah, that's, we got him since he was a puppy, and their kids are really attached to the dog.
And he's two?
Uh, he's three.
The dog is three?
Yeah, he was born in 18. Yeah, he'll be four, 4th of July.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Is anyone else here tonight on this matter? If not, we will close the hearing portion, bring discussion to council.
Well.
Go ahead.
I can give my little bit. I think the dog was in the yard. He did not cross the, leave the yard when the police officer came, and the officer was very intimidated by him. But I think that's what dogs do, especially German Shepherds, that they are inherently protective of a property. And I think as far as it not being in control of the owners, well, it was on their property, so if it's kind of in their control, it didn't leave the property. And today, just today, a prominent public person said that, regarding the whole gun issue, that people should get dogs to protect their property and not have guns. So I think that's what we're supposed to be doing, according to the people in Washington, DC. A stranger coming onto the property, I think they maybe need a sign saying, beware of dog, call this number before entering the property, but I think that's the worst thing that we should do tonight. They already have a fence.
They have an invisible fence.
An invisible fence, which does, that's what we have. It does a great job of controlling the dog.
Some do, some don't.
Unless a rodent.
Of keeping him on the property. I agree.
I know some invisible fences that don't work, though.
Yeah, I mean, we have one too.
Don't say they all work. Not, not all of them work.
But I mean, the difference between an invisible fence and real fence is, real fence keeps people from going onto the property too, if it's secured, so. Is there something you'd like to add?
Yes. Yes, I got two signs out there that says, be aware of the dogs, one on each side of the driveway. That's been there for.
You had, they were, they've been there for a while?
They've been there before the first incident.
Okay.
So there is two signs, one on each side of the driveway.
Okay, that wasn't in the sheriff's report, as far as I remember, so. I'll take your word for it, but it would have been nice if we had that in the sheriff's report, so. Because that is one of the things we'll consider.
Yeah, there is two signs, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's no doubt this is a tough one. I mean, he wasn't home. He was at the hospital. His, somebody who is not normally with the dog was watching four, four children, as I'm understanding it. And the pizza guy comes, and they open the door and get the pizza, and the dog gets out.
I don't think that's how it happened. I think the dog was already out, but.
Oh, you stated that his child let him out. We, a time of, when the dog was let out was not established.
Yeah, because the pizza delivery delivered the pizza and then got to the car before the dog got to him. I think if it didn't have a previous incident, that's where I'm kind of not sure.
And that was a bite.
That was a bite.
Jack, did that come to council?
No.
We must have gotten a report, because I remember.
We got a report, but the victim did not want to go through the process and decided not to pursue the case. And that's why we just tagged it to the property file.
And that was a delivery person also?
Yes. Was the FedEx driver, right?
It was a delivery person.
Well, ultimately, it comes down to a dog should not be biting unprovoked in circumstances like this.
Absolutely.
It's, that, yes, we can understand that the dog is trying to protect, but it should, it was unprovoked, and it, I agree that they're good protectors for a home, and, but, unprovoked, it should not be.
You should not have to fear to deliver something to a home.
Well, and this wasn't the case where the dog was protecting anything. And this was an attack, so it was, nothing was provoking. The, the delivery person was leaving, trying to enter the car, so it wasn't trying to enter a house. That, that's protection, but.
But it was in the dog's area. That's, you could.
That could have been an eight-year-old kid going around selling stuff.
Oh, I completely understand. I completely understand. The dog should not be biting. I'm just saying, if it may have been trying to protect something, it may have been trying to protect its area. But still, it should not be biting.
Jack, was there anything from the 2020, there was no anything labeled on that dog for, when he was?
Just, just what the incident reports you have in your packet was. Again, the person, it was the victim, did not, did not want to pursue the case.
So there was nothing, no dangerous dog or anything?
No.
Okay.
Well, considering the fact that the owner understands that there's been issues in the past, and it already posted signs for that, that's one of our requirements that we can apply. I'm going to make a motion that we sustain a potentially dangerous dog designation, including all eight of the conditions, which are, I'll paraphrase. Owner must provide proper enclosure for the dog. I mean, if it's outside, it's got to be enclosed. The owner posts warning signs, which they already have. The dog must have a tag identifying as potentially dangerous dog. Owner must carry insurance, which I think is important in this case, because there's two documented bites. If the dog is outside of closure, must be buzzled and restrained, which sounds like they will do anyway. And then the dog must be licensed and open to inspection. That's my motion. Is your second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Discussion.
I disagree, except for the licensing.
You don't think a dog should be licensed?
I think that's the only one I agree with, that they should get him licensed. I don't think it should be contained.
I'm going to disagree with you. So he, I've got the pictures. He bit that gentleman. He bit his hand pretty good. I don't care if the dog's, you know, in the yard or not. He still bit somebody. So the individual that owns the dog should own up to it. So I don't think any of these that Steve wrote, they're all appropriate, so.
Well, and I think, like I said, I think a lot of it already, some of it already applies, I mean, but it's, I don't know why we exempt. I mean, this wasn't just a bite. This was an attack. The dog bites and goes away, that's one thing. This dog wanted to bite again.
And the dog wouldn't let the gentleman back out of the car to do anything. He was.
And there's one other bite that we know of, so.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none to the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. You can contact the city staff, and they can help you through with all the requirements on this. Okay, on to our next hearing, variance receptacle tank variance, public hearing at 332 Cedar Road Northeast.
Okay, so tonight, we're here for a public hearing for a variance of a septic holding tank. The property owner is seeking an approval of a variance to replace a non-compliant septic system located at 332 Cedar Road with a type 2 septic system. Type 2 septic systems are holding tanks without the drain field. The variance is required per Minnesota rules, Chapter 7080 and the MPCA. The property is .27 acres in size, and it's located in the Coon Lake Shoreland overlay district. If this variance is not granted, the residential structure would be considered uninhabitable due to lack of a working septic system. Variances for type 2 systems cannot be approved if there's space on the property to install a compliant septic system, which is not currently possible due to the shallow well on the property, as noted in the letter that is attachment 3. That's from the licensed septic designer. Consideration of a variance requires the application of the following three-factor test. The first is a test of reasonableness, giving consideration to the use of the property restricted by the rules of the ordinance in a practical manner. Septic systems are required for a home to be considered habitable. The Minnesota Septic Code prohibits holding tanks unless approved through the variance process by the municipality in which they're located, and the approval of the variance would allow this property to continue as a residential use. The second is the test of uniqueness. The issue for the variance is due to circumstances unique to the property and not caused by the landowner. In this case, the property has limited space for the placement septic system due to the lot size that was created by the 1920s era plat, current setback requirements for wells and structures and DNR shoreline regulations. These factors support the uniqueness test for this particular variance. And thirdly, the test of alteration of the essential character, actually, oh, sorry, the essential character of the neighborhood. This factor is used to consider whether the resulting structure or improvement will be out of scale, out of place, or otherwise inconsistent with the surrounding area. In this case, the neighborhood has a significant number of septic variances issued due to the age of this neighborhood and the small lots. With a number of older systems needing to be replaced in this area, this variance request is quite common, and granting this variance will not change the essential character of the Coon Lake Beach neighborhood. There is a pending sale on this property. The request for this variance was prompted by the city septic compliance inspection. That's required by code when the property is transferred. The closing for the sale of this is contingent upon the approval of this variance. So at this time, city council has requested to hold a public hearing regarding a setback variance for a type 2 septic system at 332 Cedar Road Northeast. On council's review, staff is, recommends council approve the Resolution 2022-38, granting a variance to allow for the installation of the type 2 septic system on the property located at 332 Cedar Road Northeast. And to correct myself on the recommendation, I said it's regarding the setback of the variance. It is not a setback variance. It's for the type 2 septic system.
Okay, with that, we'll open the public hearing for the variance for septic holding tank at 332 Cedar Road Northeast. If anyone's here tonight who is interested in this matter and wishes to talk to council, now is your time. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Council discussion, motion.
I'll make a resolution granting variance for the installation of a type 2 septic system on the property located at 332 Cedar Road Northeast, PIN 36-33-23-24-0320.
Motion made.
That's for approval?
For approval.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Discussion. How, with these holding tanks, just in general, we've had quite a few. How do we monitor, do we, does the city monitor that, or?
They have to enter into contract with the septic pumper. Furnish that to us, so it'll be shown on what periodic basis it will be pumped or what frequency it requires to be pumped.
Okay. So the only, I think, unique one with this is they're selling the property.
That's correct.
So I would hope that somehow that's really clearly disclosed when they new property owner, because it's, we have hard enough time, people moving up here and not even know what a septic system is, let alone that this is a holding tank, so they don't want to be surprised.
Yes, they're aware of it.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other discussion? Hearing none to the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. On to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda, and I'd like to pull item B and C.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none to the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Tim?
I'm going to abstain from voting on B and C because I was not here.
I'll make a motion to approve B and C.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. Hearing none to the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
And one abstention. That motion passes. On to new business, 6A1 Plant Commission, preliminary plat for Whispering Aspen, Third Edition, Firebird Lane LLC.
For this agenda item, I will be abstaining from discussion, voting, and for this agenda item, I will be stepping down from the dais.
Okay. Stephanie.
Whispering Aspen was approved as a planned unit development back in 2004. At the time, a ghost plan was submitted as well and is attached for your review. The third edition consists of 41 single-family urban lots. So this is what the third edition looks like. It is consistent with what was approved as part of the PUD. All lots meet the requirements. Lot sizes have to be a minimum of 10,000 square feet. Lot widths are 75 feet, and then the road right-of-way width needs to be 30 feet. The preliminary plat will be accessed through Pier Street. Let me pull up the aerial. So you can see on the screen that it will be accessed through Pier Street. It's shown on the map that's on the screen. The PUD approved right-of-way width is 30 feet. The third edition street width complies with this requirement. The third edition contains one cul-de-sac. In which there will be four driveways or homes accessing off the cul-de-sac. And just a little bit of background, if you remember, on the second edition, it was approved with six lots accessing the cul-de-sac, and there was much discussion regarding that. This one has a few less, so there will be more room in the third edition for snow removal and management of the cul-de-sac area. In total, there will be 143 lots within the entire development. City staff, which is planning public works and fire, do have concerns with. City staff, which is planning public works and fire, do have concerns with only one access point into the development. In a public safety event, that would require the closing of Pier Street, there will be no other viable ways to enter or exit the development. Also, an additional access point would relieve some of the traffic used, using on Pier Street Northeast. So staff has put together, this is the access point, we're not saying to put it here, but this was just a thought that we had of having an access point, which would be extending Polk Street to the south to hook up to two hundred and forty-first. It appears that the second access could be added without affecting the number of lots, or possibly just one of the lots. As part of phase four of the development, just a little bit of a background, there will be an additional access that would be provided by the extension of Johnson Street from two forty-first Avenue, with this street connecting to Pierce Path just north of the community center, and I will show you a slide of that as well. So here we go, so. Let me see if I can get my cursor to work here. My cursor isn't working, but on here, just north of the community center, there is a street stubbed there which would come out with the fourth phase and hook up with Johnson Street. So in the future, there will be another access point to this. So again, staff did review this, planning, public works and fire have reviewed it. We do recommend the access point into the development. Then also, the city engineer has reviewed it. He has his letter attached for you to review, May seventeenth of two thousand and twenty-two. His comments are minor in nature, they will not affect the number of lots in the development of the layout. However, all his comments will need to be addressed prior to the dismissal of the final plat for approval. As for the park dedication, as stated in the amended and reinstated purchase agreement dated January eighth of two thousand and four, park dedication fees shall not be required of the purchaser in the plating process since parks already included in the project, therefore, no park dedication fees will be collected. The planning commission held a public hearing on May twenty-fourth. Public comments included the following. There was concerns with the number of lots, thinking there was too many lots, the size of the lots, erosion concerns, and fertilizers contaminating the wells. There was also support of an additional access point to the development to relieve traffic trips on Pier Street and the congestion at the Pier Street and two forty-first intersection. There was also concerns with the removal of existing trees on site. The commission did recommend approval of the plat on a six, zero vote, and there was one absent. They also discussed the concerns to have an additional access point in the development on a six, zero point, six, zero vote. And that would be to add a condition to the resolution requiring a second access point for the following reasons. To allow better traffic flow through the development and for public safety purposes in the event the Pier Street access point was closed to traffic. The draft meeting minutes were attached to your report, so you could look at those. So at this time, the planning commission recommends that city council approve the preliminary plat, known as Whispering Aspen, third edition, with an added condition that requires a second access point to the development. As part of the council discussion regarding the additional access point, council may want to consider the option of a dedicated fire and emergency vehicle access lane, similar to what was approved for the Viking Poser development. That access point would be gated but open for emergency purposes. And also, the access would be built to accommodate fire and emergency service vehicles and would be required an easement to be part of that PUD, so on part of the plat, that would show, have to show as an easement. City council's final decision on the ingress or egress will need to be added to a, as a condition in resolution twenty, twenty-two, dash, thirty-six. And the developer is here this evening to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Is there a motion on this tonight?
I'll make a motion for approval of resolution twenty, twenty-two, dash, thirty-six. Motion to approve preliminary plat, subject to a street extension, blacktop from Polk to two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty-first to meet PUD requirements of the development.
I'll second it.
Motion made second. Discussion.
Where is the park going to be for this part of it?
There's no, going to be no park.
Because I thought you said that they don't have to pay park dedication fees because a park is part of the development.
Yeah, that's correct, so. The community center, and Jack will be able to talk probably a little bit more. There's a community center up there, and I believe there's, is there a park?
There's a tennis court and a basketball court there, and then if you go on north of there, you'll see a little circle north of the pond, there's a community park and playground in that area.
So one park for all of these developments, for all these different things, areas. I'm gonna put my whole two cents in it. I was not part of the PUD vote. I don't think this whole development at all fits with the character of East Bethel. And I don't think it should have been allowed, but it was, and I can't prevent it. That being said, it's a bunch of cookie cutter buildings and they're cramming them in there worse than that you might see in Minneapolis. And I am not in favor of this. I agree with all the residents who are not in favor of this. I think they could space it out a little bit and give some people some, a little breathing room. That's my two cents.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I've been down this discussion before on different, different phases of it, and ultimately, none of us were there when the original PUD, I don't know, were you there, Steve? None of us were there when the original PUD was done, so, including Jack. I don't think you were here either.
No one was here.
Yeah, no one was here, so ultimately, as I have discovered between planning and here, although I may not agree with everything that's here, there isn't a whole heck of a lot that can be done. And I guess that's my two cents. We can change the egress and ingress.
So just for clear, your, your motion had it as a city street?
Yep.
Not, not a fire access road?
No, it was a city street.
Okay.
I did, just Steve, because of, you know, for safety.
Oh, I don't disagree. I just want to make sure.
For the fire trucks and that, I mean, that's seventy-five thousand pound truck going in there, you know. And if you have a fire up there, there's gonna be more than one truck, I can tell you that, so.
I agree with city street.
I mean, otherwise, you gotta come in, you know, and then drive around through the back and get in there, so.
Okay. Is there any, any other discussion? Are we clear enough on the motion in terms of how the resolution be revised?
There was one aspect of the condition that I think might need a little bit of clarity, and it was the idea of the extension of Polk Street down to two hundred and forty-first. Whereas I think the intention was to, of the planning commission was to do it anywhere on, on that two hundred and forty-first way where it would work for all parties. It wasn't necessarily a commitment to extend Polk Street, is, is that correct?
That's correct.
So if, if it's, if the condition's understood as extending a, a street from two hundred and forty-first way down to two hundred and forty-first Avenue, as a point of ingress and egress that meets the quality and criteria of a city street, that would, that would probably be beneficial because if you extended Polk Street south, it might, as a requirement, it might take up a whole lot as opposed to just the thirty-plus feet.
So if I paraphrase, we're being too descriptive?
Perhaps too descriptive, yes.
Yeah, but Chris, don't you have to have so many feet between streets, like three hundred and something? Is there something like that, Jack, where you have to have so many feet?
There's not a requirement, we have an engineering manual which says it recommends that six hundred feet be the difference between offset intersections. That's not by ordinance, though, that's just, that's just kind of a policy manual. One, one, one thing to point out with, if what we're talking about here is extending, the discussion is extending Polk Street to two forty-first. If you do that, these lots are a hundred and thirty-five feet deep, you're in a curve here, there's limited sight distance. So if this is the decision, we will have to sign this section here appropriately and probably reduce the speed limit to twenty miles an hour to mitigate the impact of limited sight distance there. And that comes from the city engineer.
I can pull up an aerial, too.
Yeah, they also, you know, i- i- if, if, if that axis is moved too far, can you go back?
You want the lap?
So if I, I know the axis is not shown there as it was sketched on, but if it moves too far east, now we're getting closer to whatever that road is to the south.
This is Fillmore right here.
That one? That's Fillmore, okay. If you get too close, now we're really jogging roads, and that's, and it doesn't make sense to put a road there, so. I guess I'll, I'll make a motion to amend that the proposed additional access road be located somewhere between the proposed Polk Street and proposed Taylor Street. Somewhere in there to, how that can be worked out with staff, so just so it's within that area, rather than be specific, because I think, read your motion, that really should be going straight down.
Straight down, yeah. I just want a second access, if we gotta go that way, we gotta.
Is there a second to the motion demand?
I'll second.
Discussion. Okay, hearing no discussion, on the motion to amend, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes, now back to original motion as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none to the motion as amended, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That motion passes. Thank you very much. On to department reports, Jack.
Item seven, G, one, street light installation request for Quincy Street and two hundred and twenty-first Avenue intersection. At the city public forum on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, Carolyn Holmes, pastor of Blessed Fellowship of Christ Our Redeemer, requested that city council consider the approval of the street light at the intersection of two hundred and twenty-first Avenue and Quincy Street. Mrs. Holmes informed that the process for submitting a request for a street light was a submission of a petition supporting the installation of the light from Quincy Street and two hundred and twenty-first Avenue residents, particularly those directly impacted by the light. At the public forum on May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, Mrs. Holmes presented a petition of twenty-five Quincy Street and two hundred and twenty-first Avenue residents requesting the light. This petition included the four property owners that live at each corner of this intersection. City staff has received no calls from any residents of this neighborhood that are opposed to the proposal. The petition requested that the light be installed on the pole at the northwest corner of the intersection. Due to tree cover on the west side of the pole at this corner, the light pattern at the intersection would be partially obscured to eastbound traffic on two hundred and twenty-first Avenue. Here you see, this is two twenty-first, this is Quincy, this is the church. This is a pictometry photo of it. This is the pole at the southwest corner of the intersection. This is the pole at the northwest corner of the intersection. This is the pole the petition requested the light be installed on. However, you can see the tree cover would obscure this light from traffic traveling on two twenty-first going east to sixty-five and block some of the light back over here around this intersection. Also, this pole on the southwest corner is about eight feet closer to the road than the pole at the northwest corner. As I've just described that, that's the, would be the final recommendation of staff would be to change those poles. The city contracts with Conexus for the installation, operation, and maintenance of the street lights. The service contract for each light is twenty-five years. Existing poles will be used to mount the mast arm. The pole located in the northwest corner of the intersection would require a transformer, that's this pole right here, which adds one thousand eight hundred and nine dollars to the base cost of one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Cost for this location will be three thousand eighty-four dollars. The transformer is on the pole at the southwest corner, and the cost for this light would be one thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Operational cost for the light would be five dollars and seventy-six cents a month, or sixty-nine dollars and twelve cents a year. Cost of the installation would be paid from the city street capital improvement fund and electrical service costs would be paid from the city public works twenty, twenty-two department budget. Staff requests that council consider approval of the installation of a street light at the southwest corner of two hundred and twenty-first Avenue and Quincy Street.
I'll make a motion for approval of the installation of a street light at the southwest corner of two hundred and twenty-first Avenue and Quincy Street.
I'll second it.
Motion made second, discussion.
There's a gentleman with his hand up out there.
I'm sorry?
There's a gentleman with his hand up out there.
Yes.
Pastor Caroline Hadley, and Pastor Rick Kelly.
If you could come to the microphone, please.
And I'm just trying to keep my north and south straight here. So are you talking one light or two lights?
One light.
One.
One light, and you're talking this corner over here? Okay, now part of the, I hope I was not speaking out of turn here. But part of the concern and the reason we're looking at the northwest corner was the parking lot of the church has a lot of activity at night after hours. The sheriff department's been called out there several times. And if you put the light over in that corner, you're gonna have that all in shadows, which won't alleviate the need for calling in police periodically for the sheriff. Does that make sense?
I, I understand what you're saying, yes.
Okay, okay.
I guess I didn't understand that was what the issue was.
Well, the, well, I think that's what started it.
Yes.
But, but these, the intention of the street lights are to illuminate the intersection for, for traffic safety.
Yes.
Not for security. You're, 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 there's obviously, you know, a, a benefit of, of security having that light, but the intention is, 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 is for safety at the intersection.
So my question would be, and I'm, I'm not trying to be, I'm, I'm just trying to get clarification.
Sure.
Does it make any difference which pole it goes on? If it's on the northwest corner, it's gonna satisfy the intersection for lighting plus?
Well, what, what, what staff's reporting is, if the light is in that location, it, it's, it's blocked, the view is blocked from the west because of that tree line on the north. So, and that, I can see from here that pole is much farther away from the intersection, so it's not gonna illuminate the light, the intersection quite as good. And, and there's a twenty-three hundred dollar cost for, is that what it was?
Eighteen hundred, there's a, there's no transformer on the pole.
How much was the transformer?
Eighteen hundred dollars.
Eighteen hundred dollars additional to put it on that pole because there's no transformer.
Yeah. The, the other thing, too, and we looked at this, too, in hopes that we could look at this to see if there would be some illumination, but the illumination of your parking lot is gonna be very minimal from this street light. Number one, you've got this line of trees that blocks part of it, and number two, it's too far away. These are directional downward pointed lights.
Downcast lights. They don't illuminate like the old lights that illuminate a whole block, you know, they don't do that anymore, so.
You know, from that point, we appreciated the petition and the presentation, but as Steve said, the first thing we have to look at is the illumination of the intersection, and if we can get secondary benefits from it, that's great. Putting the pole here would be twelve hundred and some dollars, putting the pole or the light here would be three thousand and some dollars with what I believe to be minimum benefits for illumination of the parking lot. I think it'd probably be better served just to attach, just to get a pole from Conexus. They'll come in and put one of the dusted on lights in fairly cheaply.
And we've installed some dusted on lights of our own to help in that area. Because we've, we've obviously been concerned about traffic accumulating in the parking lot. The neighbors, we have three neighbors. The neighbors, we have three neighbors that watch that lot diligently for us, which we're very thankful for. And, you know, I've, I've been called many times at night to say, you know, there's two, three cars parked down here.
Yeah.
Is there somebody there? And, you know, then we and, and the belief is that in part it's because it is a darkened lot. And it's, you know, very accessible. And I hope I'm not opening up a can of worms here. But I know when, when we were talking with all the residents, you know, we were proposing for that northwest corner. And there was a lot of encouragement by them because, and I'm talking, you know, the residents down this way. Because that helped them on that corner coming in and out. And also, they were hoping that it would help alleviate people coming down there and just stopping.
Yeah.
But and if it's a downward light, and I'm, again, I'm not, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just wanting to clarify for myself. The, the lighting of that intersection, like you're saying, would not be seen so well coming from the west heading east. I understand that. But I guess if it's a downward light, is that going to make a lot of difference on either side of the road?
Well, I think
For people coming?
Well, it's, again, as part of, that, that pole's probably fifty, sixty feet off the road there.
It's probably about thirty feet, but it's
Is that, I, I can't tell distance.
And the, the thing about this location for illuminating the intersection is these trees are gonna block this light quite a bit when you're traveling west to east on two twenty-first. And if you, you can see here, the overhead aerial service goes from this pole to this pole and then up Quincy Street. So the actual mast arm for the light is gonna have to be at a forty-five degree angle. So it's gonna be rotated more away from the church, which would provide less illumination for that parking lot. So, and with the downward feature of these fixtures, I just don't think you're, even if you had it on this pole, you're not gonna get the lighting that you probably expected in your parking lot.
You know, this is one of the things we brought up when the petition came in is, you know, it, it was explained the northwest corners, the preferred.
Yes.
And, and then we, we talked about the fact that, you know, sometimes it's not our choice. It depends on where services are at and where we can do things. And in this, and in this case, it, it came off. I mean, it, it's the pole location, but also the transformer. And, you know, our, our, our focus needs to be on what's serving kind of the, the public aspect of this. And it, it, to me, it's, it's clearly that, that intersection would be better served by having a light on the south side of the road than that pole that would be on the north side because of, of just the illumination and the cost.
As far as your parking lot goes, I think you should attach some floodlights with motion sensors to your building.
We have, that's what we're doing.
And that blinds anybody who was in there. And it will deter any people who have bad things in common.
What we've done is we've, we've been installing lights, motion sensitive lights, dawn to dusk type of lights to help illuminate the parking lot, to encourage people not to congregate there that are not, you know, at two o'clock in the morning. So, you know, yes, we have been endeavoring to take those steps as well.
Well, very
And, you know, the encouragement that I heard when I talked to everybody was that, and it was the families that all are down this way. Because they're the ones that use that intersection twice a day or more. They were excited because that intersection was gonna have light for them. Okay. We didn't, we didn't talk to anybody that's coming and going through that area. But we talked to all the residents down the road, which they all like that.
Well, you know, putting streetlights on, on the county roads is not meant to help the county traffic go through.
Right.
It's, it's meant to help the, the, the folks that are, that are looking for Quincy Street.
Yes.
And, and by having a streetlight, it makes it a lot easier and thus a lot safer. And that's
Does that downward, and, and again, forgive me, I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative. And if you, if I'm coming across that way, please, I apologize because that's not my intent. It's more of a, a dialogue. A downward light in the southwest corner, is that going to illuminate the intersection for the family coming up out of that, off of Quincy?
If you, if you'll look at the cursor, and this is just approximate, you're not gonna get much illumination past twenty or thirty feet past the road on either side. But it's gonna be enough where traffic coming on two twenty-first can find this intersection in the dark. It's kinda hard to locate at night for people. So this illuminates the intersection and makes it much easier to locate. And that's the safety factor that you get from the benefit of installation of these lights at these intersections. And it, it, it's not, unfortunately, the security is kind of very secondary or tertiary in this presentation.
I totally understand that.
And, and we did recognize that the petition was for the northwest corner. But when we started looking at the northwest corner with the tree cover, the distance of this pole from the street and the fact that this pole didn't have a transformer, I think it made it much more relative that we look at the southwest corner, which the pole's closer. It will light all four quadrants of the intersection and it's gonna be about sixty percent less in cost.
Well, I appreciate you at least, you know, allow me to, you know, dialogue and clarify some questions I had.
Okay.
Any other questions for us as a
No, I think we're good.
Thank you for your input.
Thank you again for coming forward with us. I mean, obviously, the neighborhood is gonna appreciate having a light there, so.
Yeah.
On any corner?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they were, in fact, it was very ironic because, you know, there was a lot of construction going on on two hundred and twenty-first. A lot of blacktopping and, you know, turn lanes and everything. And their question was, okay, is the turn lane gonna get put into then?
You had to talk to the county about that one.
One thing at a time, yeah.
Not us.
Not us.
But we say yes, please, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they did do a phenomenal job on that road.
Yes.
They have.
The railroad tracks down the way.
Let's hope they stay that way for a while.
Well, the first, when they first got it done, it was a little bit, oh, because it, I mean, it was a bump. I mean, you had to pull up over it and it, it was quite a dark. Now you can go over to fifty and don't even hardly feel it.
Yeah.
They did a great job there.
All right. Okay. Discussion. I'm sorry, did we have a motion? I don't think we did.
We had a motion.
On the lights? Okay, okay.
I think the southwest corner makes the most sense.
That was the motion, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Apologize for losing track. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you again. Okay, onto electrical fee inspection schedule.
Prior to July twentieth, two thousand and eleven, all electrical inspections in the city were scheduled through and performed by the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry inspectors. The change in regulations relating to electrical inspections allowed East Bethel the option of contracting with an independent inspector or the Department of Labor for this service. The city opted to secure this service with an independent contractor. Continuing this service with the Department of Labor and Industry would have eliminated the city's receipt of any portion of fees for those permits and potentially delay the response time for inspections. The independent contractual option allowed the city to recover a percentage of the scheduled fees, work with the local inspector to provide more timely inspections, and assure continuity of personnel for the service. Brian Nelson, an East Bethel resident, was the city's electrical inspector and served in this capacity from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and eighteen. The city of East Bethel has contracted electrical inspections to Sloth Inspections located in Andover, Minnesota since September, two thousand and eighteen. Mr. Sloth is requesting that council consider an increase in the city fee schedule for electrical permits and an increase in his payment rate from seventy-five to eighty percent of the permit fees. Mr. Sloth has not increased his fees in the four years he has served as a city electrical inspector. Mr. Sloth's other municipal clients have adopted this schedule or scheduled with higher rates. The current fee schedule for electrical permits is exhibited in attachment one in your packet. Mr. Sloth receives seventy-five percent of these amounts and the city retains the balance. The proposed fee schedule and increase in compensation to eighty percent of the fees is exhibited in attachment two. Attachment three in your package is a comparison of current fees relative to proposed charges for the service. Costs for all electrical inspections are covered entirely by fees for permits. Mr. Sloth is requesting the fee increases exhibited in attachment two and eighty percent compensation of this amount for his service. Staff recommends council consider approval of resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash forty, modifying fees to be collected by the city of East Bethel in twenty-two and the inspection fee rate of eighty percent.
I will make a motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash forty, modifying fees to be collected by the city of East Bethel in two thousand and twenty-two and the inspection fee rate.
I will second it.
Motion made a second discussion.
I just wanna say, I think these fee increases are very miniscule compared to the inflation rate right now. So I was pretty surprised. So I, I think he does, deserves that increase. It's been four years.
Jack, the, the, the change from the seventy-five percent to eighty percent, I, I assume that, that the remainder still covers our costs?
It, it will.
Okay.
Because the, the fee schedule's increasing too a little bit, so it won't, it'll be fairly close to proportional. So while the fee goes up, then he gets eighty percent, so it's gonna be a little bit more for us. We estimate that our cost for doing this is about four to five thousand a year. So previously, we had received six thousand dollars last year for this service.
And these become effective when?
These could, we, we'll set the date for when it becomes effective. We'll make that in the motion where it becomes effective July the first. I would recommend July first or August first.
I'll make a motion to amend to set the effective date as July first, two thousand and twenty-two for this fee schedule. Is there a second? Motion to amend is made in second discussion. Hearing none on a motion to amend, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? Hearing none to that motion as amended, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Onto item seven G three, ice logo.
The city approved the painting of the interior walls of the ice arena at their May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two council meeting. That approval included saving the existing logos on the west wall in the rink area. City was notified by the St. Francis Youth Hockey Association on May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two that their board endorsed and recommended the removal of the old logos and replacement with a new logo per ISD fifteen branding standards. Those standards can be found on the district website at the link provided in your packet. To remain consistent with the St. Francis ISD fifteen branding requirements, the St. Francis Youth Hockey Association is recommending that the rink interior be painted white and navy blue with gray accents. Following these branding guidelines, the St. Francis Youth Hockey Association is proposing that the existing murals on the west wall, which have been retired as ISD fifteen logos, be replaced with the logo exhibited on your screen. To commemorate the old logos and the history of the building, the St. Francis Youth Hockey Association will create a historical piece that will be a featured display in the lobby. Attachment two, which is on your screen, is a Photoshop representation of the new logo which is proposed for the arena. At the June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two work meeting, Alex Goodwin of the St. Francis Youth Hockey Association made a presentation for the logo change and requested an ice time donation for a fundraiser tentatively scheduled for September sixteenth through eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. City council discussed this proposition and was in consensus with the logo proposal and requests for the ice time donation. Staff requests city council consider approval of the ISD fifteen logo for the west interior wall of the rink as exhibited in attachment two and shown on the screen and the donation of ice time for the St. Francis Youth Hockey Association fundraiser scheduled for September sixteenth through eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Can we, just wanna request that council handle these as two separate items. We'll handle them both, but on a motion.
All right, I'll make the first motion for approval of the ISD fifteen logo, logo for the west interior wall of the rink as exhibited in attachment two.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion.
I just wanna say I'm glad they're going to memorialize the
I was just gonna say, yeah, they're gonna, that wasn't part of it. They're gonna have a display in a foyer, is the way I understand it, so. It's easy to lose, lose history when it's now, so. There we go. Any other discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes.
All right, and then I'll make the second part of this. Approve the donation of ice time for the St. Francis Youth Hockey Association fundraiser scheduled for September sixteenth to the eighteenth of two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made second, discussion. I, I suggest that we do this separately because we really didn't have a discussion at all about donating ice time. I mean, we talked about it, but the, what, we, last time we did this, we had a value, how much it was gonna cost the city. Do we have an estimate on what the value?
That was about four thousand dollars, what the city's cost was to do that.
And this, and we're gonna, if I remember right, this is earlier than we normally put ice in?
No, a- actually, we had ice in the first week of September last year. This will be about nine to ten days later, which will be to our benefit.
Okay. I, I, I thought Alex had mentioned they're gonna do this before they even start any ice.
Well, we're, we're pushing everything else back because the earlier ice time proved to be something that resulted in some extra humidity problems in the building. So we figure this is the earliest we can put it in and hope to avoid that.
Okay. The other aspect I want, just wanna bring out was the fundraiser was great. I mean, that, 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 you know, that is, that is awesome, that, 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 a community you get together like that. The part of that fundraiser, though, was to make improvements at the ice arena, which justified the city donating at time. If, if I heard Alex right this time that the intent was not to use those donations or what they raised from the fundraiser, that's gonna go directly to the, the association. Is, am I wrong? I thought she said it wasn't gonna be any improvements.
No, I was under the opposite impression that all these funds would go to donation for improvements.
So everything's gonna go towards the arena?
That was my
For the second time?
Correct.
Okay, okay, then that's fine. I, I swear I thought her, her say
I agree with Steve that I thought that she, she said that. That donations would not be going to the building, but towards the youth organization.
Well, maybe we need to get that clarified.
We, we can, why don't we table this and get that clarified? We, we get, the next meeting will be fine to approve this.
Because I, I think we gotta think about it differently.
Yeah.
Because, because then it's like, well, you know, what do we do when sort of a baseball, or St. Francis baseball has tournaments? And so you gotta, I think we gotta think about that.
No, I
So let's get it clarified. So, okay. Can we get a motion to table?
I'll motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that aspect of this item is tabled. Okay, onto staff report.
I have nothing to add.
Council reports, Brian.
I have nothing.
The only thing I have is I'd like to extend our gratitude on behalf of the chamber for all of the council members who attended and for the
for all of the council members who attended and for the council's support.
You're referring to the chamber meeting?
Chamber meeting we had last week.
With Saint Francis.
And the chamber, and the chamber's support.
Okay.
Tim.
Um, I got a couple of things here that, just to remind everybody, we have the Chamber Golf Course, September ninth, we still have openings and whole sponsors, and secondly, Booster Days, July sixteenth, we got a schedule, I think it's put out on their website, so looking forward to it, should be a good year.
Okay, Suzanne.
I would like to bring up that I've received some calls that people, that people have came to the public forum in the past and, and discussed something, and Jack said he was gonna get back to them, and it has not happened according to them, so I just wanted to bring that up tonight, and I also want to bring up that I would like to have a discussion again on, because I've gotten some calls on it again, recording the open forum, so, so it's live.
Recording it?
Yeah, having it be live, like the public, like the whole council meeting. So, I think we, that deserves another discussion because I've gotten so many calls, and that's all I have.
Okay, and I don't have anything tonight. So, with that, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor Boss, for the benefit of the public and the record, the city of council for the city of East Bethel will now entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three A. City council will be meeting in closed session to evaluate the performance of an individual subject to its authority. Individual to be evaluated in closed session is city administrator Jack Davis. After the closed session is held, the council will return to open session, and at this time, Mr. Mayor, a motion can be made to go into closed session pursuant to thirteen D point zero five subdivision three A.
Make a motion go on closed sessions for the reasons that the city attorney has indicated.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That motion passes, we're going closed session, and we'll be back.
I got back to Kevin. No, I got back.
Totally denied.
Well, I got back to you, you tell all me.
For the benefit of the public and the record, the city of coun- council for the city of East Bethel just met in closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three A. The meeting was held to evaluate the performance of an individual subject to the council's authority. The individual, the council discussed with city administrator Jack Davis. The meeting was recorded as required by statute, and that recording will be preserved for the statutorily required period. With that, Mr. Mayor, the city council is now back into open session.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The motion passes, or means adjourn, thank you, everyone.